Board of County Commissioners now back in session. Next on the agenda will be Mr. John Solomon, TDC Administrator, report.
Morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
Start out with the collection report from March 2019. The collections were 127,975. This is a $16,027 increase over March of 2018. That's a 14.3% increase between the years. And it also is the highest collection amount for the month of March in the history of the Franklin County TDC by the $16,027. So, big increase in tourism here lately. On the website activity, we had 39,537 web hits in the month of May 2019 compared to 28,000 in May of 2018, which is a 40.9% increase. The visitor centers welcomed 3,124 visitors in the month of May. The yearly total for 2019 fiscal year is 17,493 visitors that have visited our centers this year. Mr. Neighbors already mentioned the county entrance sign that we had spoke about the last time I was here. They picked it up and will be installing it in the next few days. The last bit of information is the Visit Florida Grant Open for Business Campaign that we did. At this time, the TDC and its vendors have completed all their portions of the Visit Florida Grant and are now preparing the paperwork to submit for reimbursement. The final project was the 11-minute and 46-second television show that highlights things to do in Franklin County. It'll be airing on NBC, Fox, and CBS. It'll air 125 times in Albany, Tallahassee, and Gainesville markets. It will also be airing on Forgotten Coast TV as well as social media and YouTube. It'll be used in other marketing advertising campaigns in the future, maybe the whole, our parts of the TV show will be. Along with that, the company that we used for that also gave us 250 open-for-business commercial airplays on those channels at no cost. So, the next scheduled board meeting is tomorrow and June 26th at the East Point Visitor Center for the Franklin County TDC. Yes, sir?
Commissioner, if I may, first thing, I have a link to that. John sent me a link and I'll forward it to each of you. You'll be able to look at that video on your own. I just wasn't going to show 12 minutes worth of video here at the meeting today. So, item number five on my report, if I may, Commissioners, last Monday, June 10th, Ms. Kelly and I met with Ms. Tana Kendrick of 2K Web Group to discuss promoting and automating the rental process for the Fort Coombs Armory, the county's designated convention center. Ms. Kendrick's proposal includes designing a website for mobile-friendly use, optimization for search engine use, calendar, automated booking with email notification, photo gallery, virtual tour, ADA compliance, staff training, statistics, branding, and profile setup on popular wedding websites and other items. So, basically, what we're trying to do here, Commissioners, is, one, automate this system as much as possible. So, basically, if you want to rent the armory, you'll go to the website, check the calendar if you, if it's available, you'll go directly where you can sign the contract electronically, fill it out and sign it. Then you can use your credit card and you pay for it. Never have to call the office, never have to come into the office to get this all done. We will be notified by email that you've done that. And from there, that simplifies the process and makes it easier. In addition to that, she also wants to promote the armory. One of the things she's talking about, that if you do a Google search, some, anywhere, looking for a place to hold a wedding reception in Franklin County, the armory will be the first place that pops up. And you'll know about it, the pricing. There'll be a virtual tour where, basically, if you've seen it on your phone, a lot of realtors have that, you could actually look at the whole entire house on your phone by scanning, swiping left and right, that'll be included, along with some history, some pictures, et cetera, et cetera. So, what I would like the board to do, since this would be promoting the county's convention center and 2K Web Group is a TDC vendor, would the board consider allowing TDC to review the proposal and pay for the website creation and annual fees? Your county staff will still be responsible for the rental and other administrative armory duties. So, if someone wants to pay by check or cash, they will still have to come into their office to get that done. However, we're hoping not.
Hey, you're the board.
Could I ask a question, Ms. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
Now, if they go online and rent the armory and they pay for it with a credit, how are they going to get keys to the armory?
Well, there'll be email notification to myself, Fonda, and to Erin. And basically, Fonda will get in contact with them through the email that they'll fill out and let them know how to get the key or when they can get the key.
And who will be responsible for verifying that they've done all these steps before they get the key?
Our office will be.
Okay. So, you've got all that worked out?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Only question I had, Commissioner, I mean, Mr. Chairman?
Okay. And Fonda's still to be...
Responsible for cleaning and, yeah, prepping and then making sure that it is clean at the end of the event. Yes, sir.
And right now, we have to have somebody in the...
The fire watch. Yes. You still have to do that. Until we get our sprinkler system installed, yes, we still have to have the fire watch.
So, make sure somebody that'll watch that.
Oh, yeah.
We got to make sure.
Oh, yeah.
Don't, they're going to shut us down.
Yes, because the state does test and see if we have someone. They do.
Motion to approve, second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Masto. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously.
And I'm sorry, John, as TDC Administrator, I should have asked if you had any comments. I apologize. But, okay. Thank you, Commissioner.
You're going to be able to, you got it. You got anything to...
No, sir, that's all I have in report.
Okay, show me the money. Thank you, keep up the good work. Next on the agenda will be Ms. Deborah Belch, CDBG Administrator, request.
Good morning. Just as a status report, we had finished the first home replacement that we did. We have four underway now. Mobile homes should be arriving any day or certainly any week now. And then, we have another one that Colby and Shelby Nalling, it was not the typical situation. They have a, they had a mobile home, a real mobile home that they owned. I had, have a copy of the title. It was burned in the fire, but it was on the parents' property along with the parents' mobile home. So, they had to find a new place to relocate to. And they've done that. They've, they have purchased a lot, also in East Point, but outside the fire zone. And so, they, their lot is at 275 Smith Street, which is not zoned for mobile homes. So, they needed to get a modular. And they shopped around and shopped around and found one for 96.5. And it, that doesn't include septic tank. The lot already had a well on it. I did verify that the water and sewer are not available from East Point, water and sewer. Close, but not quite. So, if you'll, also, if you'll recall, the county had to put $50,000 in leverage into the, into the project and was approved to do $50,000. Well, ship doesn't work on mobile homes. And this modular, of course, is not a mobile home. And it is probably going to be the only dwelling we're dealing with in this project that will not be a mobile home. Therefore, the only one that can have leverage from the ship program spent on it. Now, I have been asking DEO for some time to confirm for me what our cost per dwelling average can be, how high it can be, because that's a factor in, in deciding how much other money we need to put into this project. And of course, the other issue is just $50,000 any, from any sort of funds. So, there are two issues I still have not gotten resolved from DEO, what our cost average needs to be and whether or not we can count owner contributions. Because I think we should be able to count owner contributions. And if we can, we may be between, what, Carol, I don't know if they'll let us count Carol Dason's insurance money or not. If they do, we're good. And if they don't, but they let us count Colby and Shelby Nalling's contribution, we will not need all of the $50,000 to come from ship, okay? The only reason we would need it, all 50, to come from ship is if we need it to keep our cost average down, because I just don't think we're going to have a lot of rehabs coming in, which originally, when I did the proposal to the state for you, with listing, you know, we were, we were guessing, you know, this is a rehab, that's, that's not. And so, I don't know that those rehabs are going to materialize, which means if we're doing all replacements, of course, our cost per unit is higher. We don't have rehabs to lower the average. So, what I'm asking at this point is, when we have the environmental clearance and everything ready on Colby and Shelby Nalling, they need some assurance that they will get approximately $80,000 to contribute toward their home. And we could, could do it all with CDBG, except for the leverage issue, needing to put leverage into the grant, period, and then possibly for the cost average. So, what I'm asking is, a waiver, and Laurie Switzer and I talked about this, if we could get a waiver of the ship limit on assistance per dwelling and provide a maximum of $50,000 in ship fund toward this. In other words, you would have agreed, and then if we can do better and don't need it, fine, we won't use it. But, they need assurance, you know, that this deal is going to go through so they can make their plans and finish things up. I'm already deep into the environmental. I've notified all the Native Americans, as Commissioner Lockley is aware. You know, got the wetlands people notified and, you know, hopefully, this thing won't be any, any kind of problem for anybody. But, we just need that contingency approval to spend up to $50,000 if, if necessary.
So, that'd be, that'd be what we had to match anyway, right?
Right, the county's already pledged $50,000 in ship funds. And, but, but, you know, with this being the only one, that'll be a, a house, that's the only one we can spend it on.
Yeah. And we got to do it. Please, you're the board.
So moved, second.
Okay.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Masto. Any more discussion? Now...
Okay.
If, oh... Like you said, if we don't, we still got to spend it, right?
Well, if, if they'll let us count owner contributions and other things, and if we don't need that to keep our cost aver, CDBG cost average down, then we won't use it. Because I'd rather not use the county's ship funds. I'm, I'm, I want to help you protect that money for other people. And, and so, that's my goal, is to not use any more than we have to. But if we need it, just like I said, for a cost average of CDBG, or they don't let us count other things, then we'll use it. And we might use less than $50,000.
Now, I got one more question I got to ask, and I'll be through. You said the sewage wasn't ready. They're going to be on separate?
Yes, sir.
So, now, once you put them on that separate thing and the sewage come later, they going, who going to be responsible? They'll be responsible then, right?
They would, right, right. No, the county would not be responsible for individual sewer connections there any more than it would any other place.
Okay, okay.
I have a question for you.
Go ahead.
Are they, these homes furnished?
No.
You got, you got that stuff out there, that storage pan set is out there?
Yes. The, we would make sure they had a refrigerator and range.
Okay.
But not furniture. And not, and not washer and dryer either.
We need to get that emptyed out out there in that storage room for meal doos.
Yeah.
It's full of mattresses and box springs and other stuff that needs to get out.
These first four, now, Carol Dason's already gotten her furniture, but these next...
Right, she got hers.
These next four should be coming up very soon, so they might want to take advantage of that.
If one, one person I talked to, they said they was going to get, come get some, the other one, I guess, will.
Yeah.
Okay.
None of them not wanted?
No.
No.
We got a bunch of it out there, Mr. Noah.
CDBG grants don't pay for furnishings. They, they usually don't even pay for washers and dryers either. But they do refrigerators and ranges, because that's considered a part of the meeting the housing needs.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else got anything? For the board? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously.
Hold one second, Deborah. To clean it up on the county side, I need a separate motion. Item number six is an action in Ms. Belch's report, requires up to $50,000 in ship funding. In order for ship to use these funds, this CDBG case, Ms. Switzer, your ship administrator, stated that the county would have to use the existing ship down payment assistance strategy. The board and Ms. Belch agrees, a motion is needed to waive the down payment assistance $15,000 limit and allow up to $50,000 for this specific case only. So, I need a motion from the board stating that you do that.
Sir? I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Masto, second by Commissioner Jones, and make sure you put in there just this one person?
This one case, yes.
Okay. Any more discussion on that? Well, we had, we had made this agreement back then when she first come in, that she going to use the ship if needed.
It's just a waiver of the limit for the ship program.
For the specific case only.
Just a waiver. Okay, y'all ready to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That passes unanimously.
And my second issue is, we had the very first rehab that we did under the first phase of this CDBG grant. The owner was an elderly woman. It was the fall of 2016. She has sent, recently died. And I calculated the amount of her original CDBG loan, we call it a loan, but you know how that goes, it's forgivable. But the amount that remained and her heirs or her estate have paid to the county that dollar amount. So, we need to authorize the chairman to sign a satisfaction of mortgage.
So moved, second. Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Masto. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously.
And that's it for today, for me, unless you have any other questions.
Thank you for your work.
Okay, thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda will be Mr. Chris Lane, Langston Consulting Consultant.
Mr. Chairman, I'll introduce Ms. Christina.
Christina.
Christina Lang, yes. Yes, she is with Lang...
Miss, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Okay.
She represents the firm that we've hired to assist in developing the MYP. The MYP is a multi-year implementation plan, which is a required component of, from the US Treasury for accessing our restore money. And as we talked last time, at this time, we are looking at two planning grants. This will be a planning grant to look at dune restoration throughout the county, estimate about 16 miles of coastline. And to reiterate, the planning grant for the dune restoration includes those beaches that have public access and though, but does not include beaches such as Dog Island, because not only does Dog Island have a Cobra, or the Cobra designation on Dog Island, stands for Coastal Barrier Resources Act, and that designation is very powerful. It was created by the federal government and is specifically designed to protect barrier islands for development and for letting natural resources or natural, natural forces occur on Dog Island without interference by man. So, no dune restoration on Dog Island, no beach re-nourishment on Dog Island, no hazard mitigation funds are available for Dog Island. So, that's why I made this statement earlier, that Dog Island has a tough road a hoe in the future. This is the beginning of a, you know, it's, it's a problem. So, this dune, dune restoration project will not include Dog Island. At this time, I phrase it so it's not going to include private beaches in Franklin County. This is for, this is public money to be spent to protect public beaches and the houses at front on public beaches. So, St. George Island, Caribelle Beach, Alligator Point are the primary areas. The limit, the mileage, I estimate it's 16 mi, 16 miles, it might be slightly more or less, you know, we'll see. This first step will be to do a planning grant, to develop a plan, because not all parts of the dune restoration would be the same. Maybe some get vegetation, maybe some get sand fencing, maybe some get sand fencing and vegetation, I don't know what it would be. But the planning grant will describe the kind of effort it will take over these public beaches. And then we would then go and get a construction, a separate restore act for construction. That would be several million dollars. The planning grant, we're estimating $100,000 or there, or $110,000 to be exact. So, $110,000 for planning, and then construction will be following a year or so later with, you know, estimating several million dollars. The second planning grant would be for stormwater protection or stormwater development on St. George Island Commercial District. This is, the Commercial District is this hub of St. George Island as far as, you know, its activity. And the roads there were built by a private developer a long time ago and laid out without any stormwater protection. The Franklin, the pond on Franklin Boulevard is providing stormwater capacity for part of the Commercial District, but only part of it, and it's probably at capacity now. So, if we need, not if we do, when, in order to develop a stormwater system out there, we got to plan for where the water can go and how we can get it there and what else we have to do. So, that's another $110,000 planning grant to look at stormwater for the Commercial District. Those are the two projects we have posed for planning in the MYP. We can make amendments to MYP at any time, so this is not precluding other ideas from coming up. But this is what we have now. We want to get started, because, you know, we, the money's in the bank, the treasury, and now we can start to, to look at spending some of the money. So, I'll, I've probably said Christine half your delivery, so I apologize.
You've pretty much covered it all.
Because once I get started, as they all observe, I'll never shut up.
See you next meeting.
I guess just a few important components that were not touched on. So, there's going to be a 45-day public comment period. The document's going to be made available at the Franklin County Courthouse, the courthouse annex, and it will be available on FranklinCountyFlorida.com. Comments received, received during the 45-day period will be reviewed and addressed in the final MYP submitted to Treasury. Questions and comments can be submitted via email to Alan. And questions and comments submitted via, via mail will be sent to Michael. That information needs to be included in the, in another draft of this. I didn't have the information at the time when I printed this out. But I do have the MYP available for your review printed out at this time, if that's appropriate.
You can hand it out if you want to. I sort of realize what it is.
Hand it to Michael.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, while we're doing that?
Go ahead.
One of the main issues was, and you addressed it, Alan, is how we can amend the MYP because of what we've talked about, protecting the road at Alligator Point, whether we want to do beach re-nourishment, so we could amend that. I don't know where that's going, because getting to your report says, you know, maintenance has to be discussed before we go and spend multi-millions of dollars to do beach re-nourishment at Alligator Point. And if there's no mechanism for replacing this, because now, if we want to reimburse 50%, if we spend $4 million and it gets washed away and we don't have the money for the other 4%, I mean, the other 50%, then we've done nothing but throw the money away. So, that, but you answered the question as far as amending the MYP, as the board comes up with different projects to use the restore funds for, that we can amend that and start the process again. These are just the two main projects that the board voted on to get started on. Having said that, on the St. George Island stormwater plan that we're looking at, obviously, you're going to have to buy some property as part of that in order to have a place to put this additional water.
Well, it's not necessarily obviously, but that could be, that could be...
Where else would you put it? I mean, you're going to have to have somewhere to put a retention, another, an additional retention pond somewhere.
Well, we've been using, actually, actually, one of the additional improvements that Collier designed a couple of years ago was using one of the street ends that lead towards the bay. And so, it's possible some street ends, it's possible Goshrow Boulevard has capacity. But I'm, I'm not disallowing that what you said may have, in fact, come out, but it's not a guarantee at this point.
No, it's not a guarantee, but I see we're going to need additional property.
Yeah.
Because I don't think street ends is going to be big enough to hold up.
Well, we have the property that we acquired through the Walter Armstead deal also.
Yeah. And that, you know, but then again, how close do you want to put something like that to the bay? These are things that has to be done during, that's the reason we're applying for a planning grant, to see where we're at and see what we're going to do and how we're going to accommodate, not only stormwater plan, but some of these other issues for the county.
That's correct.
Eventually, don't it run in the bay?
It all goes to the bay eventually. Yeah, that's correct. And so, it's just a matter...
Let's first percolate first.
It's supposed to be treated first, that's correct.
Yeah, once it, once it's been, that's all, it's going to run in the bay anyway.
Chris, fair, let me just say, since you mentioned Alligator Point beach re-nourishment. So, the reason that we're not doing a planning grant for Alligator Point beach re-nourishment is we don't need one. We already have a plan. We know what needs to be done. We just have, that would be a construction component of the MYP. But you're exactly right, we don't want to talk, we have two things we have to do before we get there. One, we have to get matching money from the state of Florida, and two, we have to work out the maintenance issues. But, yeah, so, there doesn't need to be, there's not need to be a planning grant for Alligator Point, because that plan's already developed.
And we could amend it at a later date, that was my point.
Right.
If we so choose, we could amend the MYP.
Go ahead.
She's pretty much given her...
That's it? Any questions at this time?
Anybody got anything?
I'm just, I'm just going to see there going forward. Second.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Jones.
And I'll say in the interface for you to vote that they're not getting any of their money until we get money out of Restore. I've talked to Mike directly. So, this is work done and get reimbursed later. So, we like that approach.
Okay. Well, you will be coming in updating this period?
Yes, that's part of my role.
Okay. All right. Any more quick? Y'all got anything? All right. Y'all ready to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously.
Thank you, dear.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Of course.
Next on the agenda will be Ms. Marsha Johnson, Clerk of the Court, report.
Yes, and Ms. Johnson was not able to be here today, but I do have her report to read. And the budget workshops are scheduled for 9:00 AM on Thursday, July 25th, and Friday, July 26th. The departments and constitutuals will be scheduled for Thursday, July 25th. All constitutional offices, departments, and non-governmental agencies have been asked to keep their requests at the same funding level as last year. Does the board wish to make a motion to tentatively approve the same funding as the current year for the non-governmentals and not require their attendance on Friday, or just no action to go ahead and proceed with the current schedule? So, that's entirely up to the board.
Please, you're the board. Discussion. I don't know. I think, I don't, we need to see how the money running. They might, if we're going to be able to give them the same thing, how do, do we know that yet? I mean...
It's still too early to tell.
I mean, it, yeah, that's what I, we need to find that out.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Sunshine, you think, I mean, you think we, you think we should listen to them on Friday?
Well, you know, it's always a good thing to do, because, you know, then you also hear about, you know, what each nonprofit provides to the community. So, I mean, it may be something that, that you want to continue with.
Okay.
Just to hear from them once a year is probably a good policy.
Mr. Chairman? My comment is going to be the same as the chairman's here, you know, are we going to be able to give them the same? I don't know. You know, with everything, with the hurricane and everything else, are we going to have the funding? Or, or are we going to have to really raise the milage rate to get the funding? As you, as Ms. Erin said, we're not sure what we got yet. So, until we get some kind of idea of what, where we're at with the milage rate, what the milage rate's going to have to go to, is, is the milage rate going to stay the same? You know, I don't know. So, I don't know how to answer the question.
Okay, okay. Well, we will, we'll just leave the schedule as it is. That's right.
Yeah, but right now, let's just leave it like it is, and as we get closer, we'll, as we get to no move, we can, we'll have another meeting or two before we, we'll be able to tell them.
Do you need a motion to, to set that schedule, or?
Yeah, no motion, no motions either. Yeah, the schedule's already been set.
So moved on item number one.
Okay. Item number two is at the March 6, 2019 County Commission meeting. The board approved doing a budget advancement to the supervisor of elections.
Do I need to make a motion on item number one? I think your answer was yes.
Um, I don't believe so.
Okay, you don't believe so, okay.
The question was if you want to change the existing schedule, so I don't think that motion's necessary.
Okay, I withdraw the motion.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
At the March, sorry, at the March sixth, twenty nineteen County Commission meeting, the board approved doing a budget advancement to the supervisor of elections to cover the cost of two unanticipated special elections during the fiscal year. The state of Florida will be reimbursing the supervisor of elections for all costs incurred. However, the reimbursement will not be returned at the earliest until ninety days from today. The supervisor's office is struggling to pay for the costs of the, of the special general election and would like to request a loan of twenty-five thousand dollars from the board to cover the upfront costs. This loan amount will be returned to the Board of County Commission once the funds are received from the state. Once all costs are finalized, the Finance Office will prepare a budget resolution to incorporate the unanticipated revenues from the state of Florida for the special election expenses. Action requested by the board, a motion to approve a loan to the supervisor of elections office of twenty-five thousand to cover the costs of the special elections until reimbursement is received from the state of Florida.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Madison, second by Commissioner Burke. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimously.
That's it.
That's it.
Yeah.
Keep up the good work and we'll get, we'll get back with you on that old question about the nonprofit after we find out, you know, we know a little more about them numbers. Okay, next on the agenda will be Mr. Allen Pierce, Restore Coordinator, report.
Unfortunately, you heard from me a lot this morning, so I'll try and keep this presentation short.
Okay.
So I don't remember, I'm glad board of the copy was generated on my behalf. I'm Michael Moron requesting a timing center on Alligator Point Road Access Project, as you know, you just awarded the bids last meeting, I believe, and actually we're doing today. FDOT recommended we ask for an extension because of delays incurred on this project due to Hurricane Michael, so you don't need any action. We already asked for the extension. Uh, number two, board action to approve a task order for AVCON to create an assessment of the existing airport perimeter fence for DOT. The task order is funded out of the DOT grant number, there it is. The integrity, the integrity of the airport's security fence is of great concern to FDOT for security purposes. Approximately twenty years ago, and I can't remember exactly when, but it's been a while ago, FDOD provided the funds to build a perimeter fence and there is some concern that the fence has not been properly maintained. Some of the fencing went through extremely dense boggy areas for which we have had limited success in keeping vegetation away from the fence, but we need to go and make an inspection and report to DOT.
So moved.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Jones.
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimously. Hold up a minute, Alan, let me ask you something.
Yes, sir.
Michael, we got a public hearing coming up at eleven. Do, do Alan need to continue? Can we be late with that or?
Yes, Commissioner, we can start late, but we just can't start early.
Okay, go ahead then.
Okay, I might get, actually, I might get done by then. Uh, right, I'm sorry, did we vote on number two?
Yes.
Number three, board action to accept the recommendation of AVCON that Robertson Roberts is the low bid on the access road project. The AVCON recommendation and review is attached, it's on your email or your iPad. The low bid is, is above the grant award, or, I'm sorry, the low bid is above the grant amount, so the board should accept the recommendation and indirect AVCON to negotiate with Robertson Roberts to bring the construction within the eight-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-dollar budget. AVCON and Robertson Roberts are aware of all that and they're working on that, the board action.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Madison and Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimously.
Intermediating in July, then you will get AVCON come backing with a, the contract of Robertson Roberts, so you don't have that today, but you'll get, send that back, the exact amount of money for the, for the contract.
Okay.
All right, item number four, inform the board that I have been in contact with Mike Nebraska of MRD Associates regarding the county getting back on the FDEP funding list for beach renovations. At one, at one of the meetings in July, Mr. Nebraska will be submitting a resolution to the board that, the board needs to adopt stating that it is interested in receiving state matching funds for a beach renovation project on Alligator Point. The project will be in keeping with what was discussed in two thousand seventeen, which is a beach renovation project approximately one-point-two miles long and centered in front of the section of Alligator Drive that keeps washing out. The request to FDEP does not obligate the county, but the window for getting a request to DEP is by July thirty-first, so DEP can prepare a list of projects for funding in the two thousand twenty legislation. If the county is not on the list and does not receive funding, there will not be even the possibility of a beach renovation project because we need half the money coming from the state. The board would not move forward with the project until the mechanism, maintenance mechanism is, is in place, but if we are not allocating state funds, there's no need to take any other action. So we have some time to work these other things, but we need to get the request in. So Mike Nebraska, we're sending you a resolution. It'll go to, uh, Mr. Moron, because I won't be here. All you need to do is sign, adopt it. The approximate amount of money is somewhere around ten million dollars. Mike's working on the budget, uh, would be the, would be the construction estimate, so we'll be asking approximately five million dollars from the state of Florida. I will tell you now, because it's not a secret, that if we get matching money and we maximize the amount we can get, we have to build a parking lot and a bathroom. I don't want, there to be any secrets or misleading anybody, but in order to get matching funds, we have to provide a hundred-car parking area somewhere in Alligator Point and a public restroom. And the place to put it is on the land we now own at Capital City. It will solve several problems at once. If we have a bathroom and a parking area, then you won't have all the neighborhood concerns further down the point because we won't have to continue to put parking and public access in those other residential areas. So I hope the Alligator Point community realizes they step forward to solving several problems all at once. Beach renovation and protection of the road and public parking.
That, that property we own, it'll be able to cover?
Yes, sir.
It'll be able to cover the whole hundred?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, easily, easily, yes, sir. We have seven acres there.
We got seven acres, we're good.
Okay. Well, we can put, well, we can put a coat on that neck there.
Well, we can't build any buildings. There's limitations of acquiring property. We can put a parking and we'll be, a bathroom and take us to, we can't build buildings.
I got a comment real quick, Mr. Chairman. On, on this particular project that you're talking about, Alan, with a bathroom and, and parking there on the property that the county owns, I think it's an excellent idea. I know one of the complaints for people at Alligator Point is people parking in my yard and, and really and truly, I think a lot of people at Alligator Point don't want nobody down there. But they're coming, folks. That's a public road, they're coming, so you might as well try to accommodate them. And if you don't want them going to the restroom and the dunes and all, then we need a restroom for them, but we also need parking. So I would hope that message gets delivered through somebody to the people of Alligator Point, that the people are coming down that public road, it's not a private road, it's a public road, they're coming, so you need to try to accommodate them and direct everybody to a certain point. We can also have trash collection there so they don't leave their trash on the beach. So it's a win-win for the people. Yes, it'll go involve more, uh, traffic, but you're accommodating the people and you're directing them where they can park out of other people's yards and off the sides of the road. I think it's a win-win for everybody.
And another thing, Alan, what's the possibility of, um, it's a hundred, you said, that?
Yeah, we have a.
We got to meet that threshold.
Yes, yes, sir.
What's the possibility of us putting more than a hundred?
Oh, that's your discretion. I mean, it's how much, how many, you have to have at least a hundred to meet the threshold. I mean, if you wanted two hundred and there was some area to do it, you could do, you could do whatever you want.
Well, you said we had enough behind there.
You have plenty of space. I mean, I, you know, a parking spa, I'm not gonna do the math in my head, but a parking space is two hundred square feet, you got forty thousand square feet, an acre, round numbers, so you can get two hundred cars in one acre, you know, sort of. So you got plenty of room for parking down there. Uh, you know, I don't, that's something we can talk about.
Yeah, we need to, remember, you need to put, leave.
Had we discussed that it would be metered parking?
It could be. That's your, that's your discretion. The FDEP allows you to collect a revenue stream off of the parking area. So if, in fact, it was worthwhile and you had a big enough area, yeah, there, that's a possibility to generate revenue to help maintain things down there.
Yeah, I guess my question, what I'm talking about is getting these cars from parking in front of people, private.
Oh, yeah. In fact, the numbers require a greater part, you, Mr. Chairman, you're exactly right. Yeah, you could build more.
We, we have more parking right there, that's stopping.
Yeah.
Before somebody get hurt with parking in front of you.
Mr. Chairman, I got one more comment before we move on. Uh, I understand your point of view, but if we, if we do a hundred, we need to expand, we should have a property, the ability to do that. Some of this property that we're talking about, though, is wet, so you can't utilize the whole seven acres.
You can't utilize the whole thing and there's, you have the coast control setback there, but there's still, I think, plenty, I think there's a.
Yeah, there's plenty. When you're talking about metered parking, if you're not careful, you're gonna discourage people from parking there and you're right back to them parking in people's front yards, on the right of ways, and you don't want to discourage people from parking there, you want to encourage people to park there. So you need to really think about, when you're talking about doing, charging them to park there, I think you may deter them from wanting to come there and pay when they park on the side of the road. So you're gonna end up with the same problem. So you need to really, the board needs to think about it, where you're talking about metered parking and charging somebody or whether you want to encourage them to come there and park and not in people's front yards.
We want that money. We got to charge it.
That's a balance, that's certainly a balance. Let me just say, one, one thing for the record, so, because Commissioner Parrish is exactly right, state of Florida is a tourist-oriented state. State of Florida receives its revenue from sales tax, so the state of Florida has many programs set up to encourage tourism and beach renovation is one of those things. And in order to participate that, you have to provide space for tourists. I'm just sorry, ladies and gentlemen, that's the system of the program. The state of Florida wants tourism and if we want to benefit from the money that's generated, then we have to comply with the rules and that means parking lots for tourists. That's just the way it is. So you'll be getting a resolution and then we'll go, uh, see what happens, uh, next legislative session. All right, so that's four. Number five, inform the board that Clay Kennedy, Dubear, and Associates and MRD have succeeded in getting a permit approval from the US Corps of Engineers for rebuilding the Alligator Drive. This is a major hurdle that was accomplished on time. The FDEP approval is still being worked on. FDEP has asked for additional information and Dubear has responded. FDEP did extend the timeline for the emergency order, so we have more time to complete the construction project. So it was no longer a April deadline, it is June, it's June, so we have three more months. Uh, as the board is aware, there are many moving parts with this project and one of them relates to straightening out the curve on Tom Roberts. I'm in discussions with the owner, it's not written here or there, but I'm in discussion with the owner of that corner right now and we'll call him after lunch, uh, to see if we can work something out. So I've discussed the project timeline with Clay Kennedy. At this time, I need to inform the board, it is necessary to move the date of bid opening back one county commission meeting, so the bids for the Alligator Drive will now be open August fifth. So I've been telling you about July eighteenth, but, uh, there are just some things we got to get resolved and that, so it's back to August fifth.
Okay.
Okay, hopefully, you know, and I, hopefully, at the next board meeting, I'll have good news about the intersection, but, uh, I will say the gentleman there, Commissioner Bolt is not interested in selling the whole property. He's, he told me that he is not interested in selling the whole property, has emotional and ties to that he will not sell the whole property, but he will consider selling a part for the road. So that's why he hasn't responded to the other request.
I see.
Number six, inform the board that Corps of Engineers has contacted the county, let us know they will be at the East Point Channel soon to complete the final evaluation of current conditions. The final evaluation should occur last week, it's now gonna occur this week. Uh, so anyway, that project is moving forward, they're gonna come out there and make an investigation.
One thing, newspaper man, be sure you put that in the newspaper.
That East Point Channel?
Yes, sir, please.
Well, what about the one on Nittany?
Well, I, we'll ask them about when they get here, but I mean, the East Point Channel was our first priority, so.
Yeah, I knew, I knew that, but I, I just was trying to find out, had they said anything about it?
Not in an email, no, sir, so I haven't, I haven't. We'll ask them to get here.
No, but they did communicate that they did want to discuss that while they were here, though.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
So they, they're gonna be asking.
Oh, yeah, yes, sir. The difference between, well, the difference between the East Point Channel and the Two Mile Channels, the Two Mile Channel has a disposal area already built. It's just gotta be cleaned out and enhanced, but it's already there and permitted. The Two Mile Channel, we're creating a new disposal area, it's on the backside, and they just gotta go through the calculations to make sure the amount of material they're gonna dredge can fit in the disposal area.
Right. I just, I'm just trying to find out some information, 'cause they're gonna be asking.
Yes, sir.
They already left.
We'll get, as soon as we hear, we'll get to know. We've gone to item number seven, let me give you a new, a new item number seven, though. So the Hurricane Michael did a lot of damage to a lot of places and one of the things it did was, uh, beach erosion, uh, and affected the dune system. So the state of Florida has currently, uh, reclassified, uh, part of St. George Island as a critically eroding shoreline. This is something that may or may not be lasting in effect, but it's gonna be, it'll be noticed publicly in July, so I'm telling you all now, that from Bob's Size Cut East, one-point-seven miles is in the plantation, has been designated as critically eroding shoreline in Franklin County. It's the first time we had critically eroding shoreline on St. George Island. But one-point-seven miles from the cut going east, uh, it's about halfway to the airport. Now, that doesn't mean, that's a permanent designation, it means there was enough damage from the hurricane that at the time they surveyed, it looked like it, uh, you know, was critically eroding. It may rebuild itself, you know, but, but I don't want to surprise, have people surprised that there's something new on the horizon, so.
So that didn't come with, Mr. Chairman, so that didn't come with, uh, enhanced, uh, beach renourishment?
The state of Florida did not fund beach renourishment. No, the state of Florida did not give DEP any additional money for beach renovation because of Hurricane Michael and did nothing for dune restoration.
So this, this designation, let me rephrase it, this designation doesn't come with any per.
No.
It's just a designation.
It's just a designation. Well, let me tell you what actually does, Commissioner. If we ever do beach renovation, you can only do, I, I think the matching, the maximum matching is only eligible in areas where critically eroding shoreline. So Alligator Point's critically eroding, so if we ever did beach renovation on St. George Island, we would get a maximum benefit.
Yeah.
Down in that critical section, but we're not at that point yet. First of all, who knows where the sand source is on St. George Island and you're talking millions and billions of dollars.
I was just wanting it to come with any per.
No, at this point, it does not come with any perks. It, it does have some, if it continues to maintain itself, the critical shoreline, you know, indicates that there might be a higher thirty-year erosion rate. And for those who are familiar with construction and thirty-year erosion lines, you know, that may be an impediment on someone developing their property, but that's a private property battle. So, okay, that's, um, all our report.
Anybody got anything for Mr. Pierce? Keep up the good work.
All right. Thank you.
Go get us some more money. Nine, 11 o'clock, we got a 11 o'clock public hearing, orders to amend the R7 zoning district. We're running a little late, so it's time to start that.
Yes, sir, this is a public hearing on an ordinance to amend the R7 zoning district. The caption of the ordinance is as follows. This is an ordinance amending the R7 multifamily high-density residential zoning district to increase the minimum lot size from 2,900 square feet to 4,356 square feet, clarifying the maximum building height, adding that all lands in the district are subject to the Franklin County Critical Shoreline Ordinance and the Franklin County Flood Hazard Ordinance, providing for conditions, providing for separability, providing for inclusion in the county code, and providing an effective date. Commissioners, the, the reason you're hearing this is because at present, your R7 zoning code allows for a maximum density of 15 units per unit within the urban service area in East Point. As you can see from the map, there are only three affected parcels. One is located at the intersection of Highway 98 and Fourth Street, the other is in the middle of East Point, just to the west of Island Drive, that is on Begonia Street in East Point, and then at the, the top of the hill in East Point is you're headed towards Apalachicola, that some of us may remember is the old Maud's Restaurant Site. It currently is the location of all the pilings that are so lonely for not having a building on top of it. Your comp plan was amended back in 2009, perhaps, I believe it was '09, maybe that '05 update, reduced the density from 15 units to 10 units maximum, and the zoning code is inconsistent with that. Your county planner advised me of this inconsistency, so therefore, we're having this public hearing. And at this time, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I will call for public comment.
Go ahead.
Is there any public comment on the proposed ordinance?
Mr. Chairman, may I make, so this came about?
Alan, finish public comment. Is there any public comment? One more time, I had, I couldn't resist, I'm sorry, go ahead.
This came about because it was actually, just for the history, for the record, when we were looking at Cornerstone, that was many, many, many years ago, Cornerstone Development, there was a negotiated settlement by the board with the developer, and the density went down from 15 to 10 units an acre. And so, once we established that there, then it needs to apply everywhere. And so, this is from those many, many years ago. We never had any more interest, that development went away, so we never did make the correction in the zoning code. We should've done it back then, 10 years ago, whenever it was, but it just wasn't done.
But the bubble burst right after that.
Right, that's correct, so there wasn't, there wasn't any need, we just, you know.
Commissioners, unless you have any questions for me, I have no further presentation, and if you are ready to act to either approve the ordinance as submitted, or disapprove it, or approve it with amendments, you're in a procedural position to take action at this time.
Okay, it wasn't no public comments on it, and no, any comment from the commission for our call for the vote? All right, y'all ready to vote, all in favor?
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, yeah, that's right, I'm getting the, putting the house.
Motion to approve.
And I had put that way ahead of the car, that car to here, okay. Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Parrish. All right, all ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Well, they're passing none of them. So it's back way forward to bid now, right? Everything, okay?
Upon filing of the ordinance with the state, it will be, Commissioner, it should be in the next day or two. Mrs. Lori Hines files these electronically, so it'll easily be of record in the next day or two. Mike, will you make sure that a copy, a reduced copy of that is attached to this? It has to be attached when it goes to Lori.
Next, next on the agenda be Mr. Michael Morone, the County Coordinator Report.
All right, Commissioners, we'll start with item one. For your June 4th meeting, Attorney Schuler requested and received board authorization to attend, along with expenses and travel, the canvassing board conference in Orlando, which is from October 17th to the 19th. Attorney Schuler didn't realize that he should have included the county judge, two commissioners, and myself, me, when he made that request. Board action to authorize travel and expenses for County Judge Schuler, both appointed commissioners and myself, to attend the canvassing board conference in Orlando from October 17th to the 19th.
Ready to vote?
I could see him missing, you know, he could miss, how can he miss commissioners and me, but I, I could see him missing the county judge, because there's no relation there, but still.
Michael, and the two appointed commissioners are?
He has a, on his report.
That gonna be you and?
And I think we can take this as a combined motion, the, the last action item on my report, if you recall, Mr. Jones had, had inquired about the canvassing board membership at the last meeting. I spoke with Supervisor of Elections Heather Riley after that meeting. She thinks that because, now is the time to go ahead and appoint the members, the new members of the canvassing board, although typically you would not, but in this, this case, you should, because the conference has been scheduled earlier than it has been historically. Typically, the conference is in January, it's now being scheduled in October, so she thinks in order to get the commissioners appointed, and everyone have time to adjust their schedule, now is the time to appoint those two new members. The only two members that are presently eligible for the 2020 election cycle would be the two commissioners who are not running, which would be Commissioner Bolt and Commissioner Parrish. So my recommendation is that you would include in the motion Mr. Morone has requested, the appointment of those two commissioners as the, the alternate, the primary and the alternate member, it's up to the board who you're going to select for each one of those positions, and then also to appoint Mr. Morone as a second alternate, so that in the absence of the two commissioners, we could still have a form of the canvassing board, so we can canvass the elections.
Yeah, 'cause the day I be through at the, on my elec-
I'm making a motion to approve all that, then, so we're appointing the, the two members for the canvassing board from this commission?
That would be Commissioner Parrish and Commissioner Bolt, but it's up, up to the pleasure of the board as to who's gonna be the alternate and who's gonna be, be the primary member, y'all, y'all need to decide that.
Okay, well, in my motion, then I'll make Mr. Bolt the primary and Commissioner Parrish the secondary, and approve their travel to go to this conference. It's a good conference, I went to it, it was a good conference.
All of them in the one. All right, got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parrish. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? They're passing none of them.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Be the day, that the last election will be this year, right? I'll be through with my doing.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, be as you do.
See, all you're turning in your badges and your guns, huh? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Item two, I inform the board at your May 21st meeting, that Mr. Mark Kurington, your county planner, will be working on an updated land use plan for Fort Coombs Armory and the surrounding property. This updated land use plan is due to the Department of Environmental Protection Division, Division of State Land in less than 90 days. As a requirement, the county has to schedule a meeting to accept public comments on the updated land use plan. This meeting will be held at the Fort Coombs Armory on Thursday, June 20th, 2019, at 5:00 PM Eastern Time, and will be hosted by Mr. Kurington, not by this board. If you need additional information, do not hesitate to contact Mr. Kurington. He called it, I mean, that's, that's all part of the plan, and that's his role in doing it, so I don't really need a motion, but I do need to inform you publicly that, that meeting is taking place. Item three, Mr. Kurington advised me that we need to update the zoning code that is posted on the county's website. The update will include several amendments we have made over the years, perhaps the one with R7, right now that we just did, references to state offices that no longer exist, references to Florida Administrative Code sections that are no longer valid, and typos that need correction. Board action to authorize these changes to the zoning code, a final version will be presented to the board before it is uploaded to the county's website.
Second.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Mastin, all in favor? All opposed? They're passing none of them.
Thank you. About a month ago, CBVR Telcom Design Group, acting as an agent for Verizon, sent a letter, along with additional information, seeking a permit to add utility type pole cellular antennas and radio equipment in the public right-of-way, which is shown in an included construction drawings, that would enhance their wireless communication network, specifically for the purpose of increasing coverage and capacity in the locations of emergency operations centers during hurricanes, natural disasters, and other times of emergency. Their goal was to have these poles and antennas installed before the start of hurricane season, but due to some communication issues, I'm late bringing this request to the board. Board action to authorize Mr. Kurington, your county planner, and Mr., I'm sorry, and Attorney Schuler, to do a review of this request, and if there are no problems or conflicts, issue the requested permit.
Ready to vote?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Michael, if we approve this, how long do you think this is gonna take? Is this something we can, I know that we're ju, we were just now looking at it, just now possibly approving it, we are, we are already in hurricane season, so, I mean, anyway, I just think time is of the essence.
Yes.
If this is approved by the board today.
Yes, I'll, I'll let the attorney and planner work out, I think they'll review it rather quickly.
I've reviewed the documents tentatively already, Commissioner Jones, I, I can't envision any reason why we can't report back to the board at the next meeting.
Okay, real quick, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Also, on number four, if you're aware, the state just superseded the county preventing these smaller poles and all in public right-of-way, so they preempted the county from excluding this, and to go along with Commissioner Jones's comments, I, I too think we need to move forward with it, and we really don't have a choice, I mean, you can't present any oppositions, so for that, I'll make a motion to.
Wait, wait, he, he.
Just, just a comment, would this be an appropriate antenna site to relocate the fire net antennas?
Oh, no, sir.
Sheriff's area?
No, sir, this is probably going closer to the ELC, and I don't think they're gonna be as high as you would need.
I see, okay.
Yeah, this is just, say, temporary, I won't say temporary, but just auxiliary antennas, additional that would, in case the main antenna blows down, or there's so many people in the county, like, let's say, July 4th, or July 3rd, the night of July 3rd, I promise you, you will not be able to get a call out of Apalachicola and Horizon system, I promise you, because there'll be so many people here, the capacity in their system just, it just shuts down. It happens every year for the last two, three years. So, in case of a storm or emergency, these antennas would allow additional capacity and coverage throughout the county.
You think that'll hit, think that'll hit on that July 3rd?
I, I'll ask, Commissioner, I doubt it, because these antennas are gonna be located really close to the ELC, and I don't know, I'll ask. I was also gonna ask them about locating antennas at the sheriff's department, I'm surprised, I have to ask Mark, I didn't look at, in the plans, I didn't see antennas at the sheriff's department, and I wish they would do that, too, so I'll check on that also.
What, tell them, make them aware of that problem that do happen on July 3rd, because like you said, it happened last year, I couldn't get a phone call out, neither. And then, that's kinda bad for emergency, I mean, you can't even call that one.
So, what I'm asking here, just because I, I wanna make, make sure that, what I'm asking, and what you guys are gonna make the motion for, is that today, once you give this approval, once the attorney and the planner says, yes, we can go ahead and issue the permit, is that what you guys are saying? Okay, so we don't need to bring it back to you again? Good, thank you.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? They're passing none of them.
We did five and six, item seven, at your May 7th meeting, this board approver requests from Community Action Agency to purchase a permanent home for family, that included two children, that were renters and lost everything due to the East Point Lime Rock Fire. Since then, since the fire, I'm sorry for the misprint there, the family was able to purchase their own lot, which made them eligible to receive a home from the donated funds. Community Action Agency did not realize that there were no water or sewer taps on the lot purchased by the family, so they are requesting authorization to pay for the installation of a septic tank and for East Point Water Sewer Water Tap. The estimated cost for both of these items is $10,400, that'll be the maximum.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Mastin, second by Commissioner Jones.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of clarification, and the reason why it's a septic tank is there is not anywhere close to East Point Water Sewer being able to supply sewer to that lot.
And it'll be, the other, this ain't gonna be just like the other, like Deppard said, when it come available, they'll have to get it.
On their own, yes, sir.
Yeah, East Point Water Sewer's constantly looking for grant funds, and if we get grant funds to pay for infrastructure, then of course, the residents aren't paying for it, the grant does.
Yeah, they do that in Appalachia.
Right.
Okay, y'all ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? They're passing none of them.
Item eight, the Weems Board of Directors, besides the new facility and the new roof on the current building, has made relocating an EMS station in Apalachicola one of its top priorities. The previous EMS station in Apalachicola was destroyed during the storm. As an option, I contacted Ms. Angela Webster at Community Action Agency, and requested a quote for a three-bedroom, two-bath unit from Ironwood Homes, which is the same vendor that supplied the units for the East Point Fire survivors. The Weems Board of Directors reviewed the $50,000, $50,730, three-bedroom, two-bath modular home quote, and recommends that the county commission authorize a purchase from the healthcare trust fund of this modular home to be used as an EMS station here in Apalachicola. It will be in the same location behind the hospital where the previous EMS station was located. Your approval would also include a purchase of a security camera system. So, I mean, Commissioners, I'll say this, I was one of the ones that, promoting this as much as possible to the Weems Board of Directors. I just find it ridiculous that if someone in Apalachicola needs an ambulance, they call, the ambulance is dispatched from East Point to come to Appalachia to take you to Weems. I'm sorry, that, that just doesn't work for me.
Don't work for nobody.
You know, so.
Ready to vote?
One question, one question real quick, Mr. Chairman, the old EMS facility we had, a tree fell on it, has these trees been removed?
The tree has.
So they don't fall on this new station?
Yes, sir, and I've worked with Fonda and Howard about destroying it and moving it to the, to the landfill.
Okay, so, so we don't have to worry about a tree falling on this new place, what I'm saying?
Oh, I'm sorry, you talk, as a trees, I, I kinda anticipated, okay. I'll make sure that they remove the trees, so that it doesn't happen again.
Yeah, so it doesn't happen again.
I'll just talk to Nicole, okay.
You get a good surround in there, 'cause there's some oak tree was in there.
Now, one more question, Mr. Chairman, is this not reimbursable by FEMA, because storm damage destroyed the other one?
I got that, huh?
I mean, it's county property, and it was destroyed by a tree falling on it in storms, and.
And they didn't submit it for insurance, did they?
I don't know that they did.
Well, the part, question, was it being utilized at the time? Yes.
Evidently it was.
That's what I've been told, okay.
So, I'm, I'm gonna make a motion to approve, and also directing county staff to check on my suggestions that I just made, whether the old, the old facility could be reimbursed to offset the cost of this.
Yeah, I mean, I haven't heard any discussion of the insurance, you know, for the emergency.
If it was destroyed and it was public property, then it should be reimbursable, so I'd like that looked at, but also, in my motion, I would include to move forward.
I will.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Jones, and yeah, make sure, hey, it's never too late, I don't think, I don't think, it shouldn't be too late for, might be too late for FEMA, but I know it ain't too late for it, I mean, for insurance, just tell them we overlooked.
I will.
They know, they got pictures of what all happened back then. Any more to question? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? They're passing none of them.
Okay, and as a reminder, your ethics class, with Attorney Cox, is scheduled for Saturday, June 29th, right here in this county commission meeting.
And the time for that, Mike?
Usually, usually it's at 8 o'clock, so he got, it has to be four hours, he's trying to start at 8, so he can be out at 12.
What date?
The 29th, it's the last Saturday in the month.
You sent us an email for that?
I will, a reminder email.
Where they confirm time?
I will.
They're gonna be ready, all right?
Yes, sir.
Same man teaching.
Yes, and I also invite some of your volunteer boards, as you asked me to early in the year, I'm gonna send out a, a letter to them, an email to each of them, you know, inviting those volunteer boards.
They need to be included, least once.
Yes.
Well, Michael, you, you through with your report?
Yeah, yes, sir, yes.
Well, what, what I wanna do, watch you up there, on this hospital, let me see, I wanna set up a workshop, we getting two different prices on this hospital, one high, one low, and we ain't got the money for neither one of them. So I wanna set up a workshop with the architect, the one who, the construction, the people who doing the construction.
Contractor, okay.
Contractor, and all of, everybody who, so we can get some training, we ain't got so much money here, and all these wish lists got to go somewhere. I mean, if we gonna, if we gonna build something, it's time to build what, what we can, with the money we got, with the, the money, things that got higher, things that went up. I knew it was gonna be more than the 10, the 10 million, what we, they told us, that was 10 million up here, well, with that time, I know the price was gonna be higher than that, for these 17 million, and it's, it's ridiculous, but it ain't jumped that much. So, we got to get out and, we got to get together and tell them, and don't look like they gonna, we, we asked them to come back with a price for what we had said, they come back still with what they wanted. We not dealing with wish lists, we did, we got to get what we getting for. And all the, all the other stuff, we can deal with it later, or whatever, and this, that, and the other, so what we, once we get them all in the room, and they tell us what we getting for, with what we decide we wanna spend, not them, us, 'cause we've got to pay it back, we know what we got in there, we decide what we gonna spend, and ask them what we can get, when we get satisfied, then we can tell people, go to work, with all this here, I want this here, and I want that, I ain't, I ain't with that. We got, we promised the people something, and we going back and forth, instead of ending up with nothing. So it's time for us to take over and just get in there, if it's okay with y'all, we get together, get everybody in there, in this movement, and then we decide, tell them how much we gonna spend and what we gonna go for. If it's okay with y'all. I'm just one commission, yeah, go ahead.
Just a comment and compliment what you're saying, isn't it an appropriate intersection now to consider having a public input?
I ain't with, no, I ain't worrying about no public input, we got, we done had the public input 10 years ago, for the unconcern, we, we need to, the input need to be, we got to put the input in first.
I, I was.
That's my thought, it's up to y'all, if y'all, hey, I ain't but one commission or nothing.
If, if I may, Commissioner Bolt, I would, following what the chairman is saying, I would recommend that, first, you do have a workshop, yourselves, like you said, architect, contractor, you'll need a reports from, from Aaron.
Yeah, we need some of that.
Saying basically, a little history over the years, how much money, I know what we collect, how much money actually is put into the trust fund, because, you know, you're buying an ambulance, you always fix this, there's always expenses, so you need a basic amount of money that you're actually putting into the trust fund, that you can make these payments from. And Aaron has, I think that'll be the first thing that needs to come up, and from there, you can listen to, to, to Weems, HD, or the chairman, whichever one of that board, saying what they would like to build, and then you basically take input from your architect and your contractor, and a job that's saying, okay, Commissioners, for this amount of money, this is what you can get, you know? I, I agree with the chair, I, I think we're at that point, 'cause it's, 'cause what's gonna, for instance, they had a meeting Thursday, you know, they were at 14, 14 million, I think it was, 40. something, they had a meeting yesterday, Mr. Canton Tech sent me a message, an email, I think it was, and he said they were down to 12.8 million, but that wasn't a hard number. Commissioners, we need a hard number, we need something to work, and we need a, a decision, what are we going to go forward with, with what we can afford? That's what it's coming down to, and back and forth, it, it, it's not working out, and if I sound a little frustrated, I am, it, we just need to make a decision and move forward with what we can build, you know, and your architect and your contractor. And your architect and your contractor are going to be the ones to tell you, you know, this is what you can afford, you know? This is what you can get, so, yeah.
I tell you, I tell you what I'm willing to do now, I mean, I think, and I, I tell you what I think we should do, like I say, I'm just one commission. After we have this meeting, I'm willing to have a.
Yeah.
A public input, you know? But ain't no need of them having, having no public input till we decide, but we gonna be, we ain't gonna know no answer.
You want to know our guidelines first.
Yeah, we got, we got, we got to have something to present to the people.
Yeah.
But we go in there in the beginning, hey, they gonna burn us good, so we ain't gonna have nothing.
I'm just wondering about what the style of that, you see, our architects and people will give us our guidelines money-wise.
I meant, but no, we, I think we go in there and tell them we ain't gonna remember so much, and what we can get.
And then we can look at different outcomes of what we can get.
Yeah.
And still preserve our licenses.
We still in the driver's seat.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's up to us.
Yeah, we, we, we call the budget.
We call and tell them, so, right now.
I mean, you can't really have a public here until you know what you, what the public is going to come comment on exactly, so you, you gotta get something.
Well, we in the driver's seat right now, right now, everybody else, no date. What, what, what been happening, y'all seen what been happening, we asked for a price, they come in here with, we told them, said we want the same thing we asked for before, but they, it never come, that, I would like to see that price or something go through with how much it been up since the time we had that price, but all this add-on, we didn't ask for that, I mean, it wasn't my intention to ask for it. They, they started sending us papers with what they done added on, their wish list and all, I ain't, we know that wish list stuff. So, they want this, you want a procedure room, you ain't got no procedures out there. Hey, let's get rid of here. We gotta get rid of it. I mean, you got, you got to do what we gotta do, isn't it, I know we need it. But, you know, you got to, before you get a procedure room, you got to, we got to, why build a room right now and it gonna take ten years for a doctor to come in there and do the procedure? You know, we might want to build a procedure room in some, another location. And it can always come later, that's my thought.
A comment?
Yes, sir.
Mike, what dates are you looking to set this meeting up on?
Looking at my calendar, I would.
You got budget here, workshops end of July now, I mean.
If I do, it would be the second, have to be the second meeting in July, because the first meeting is, is in July, is July second. You know, most, most people are off with the Fourth of July week, so I doubt I can get the architects and/or the contractor here. So, I will shoot for the sixteenth of July at one thirty, can I?
Is that after one of our meetings?
That'll be after one of your meetings. And then your, your, your budget workshops will be the following week, the Thursday and Friday, if, if the board is in agreement with that.
And, you know, I might have to vote or nothing, because, because we get together and all, so we can have, get them a number, they giving us numbers now, I think we should get them a number, what we gonna deal with. Basically, all they doing now, they giving us numbers about how much it this, how much it that.
If we get, Mr. Chairman, if I might, if we get, if you want, if we want to give them a number, and I like, like you, I'm just one commission, I'd like the number for what's already been approved.
Yeah, that would.
That's the number I want.
Yeah.
Now, construction costs may have went up a little, so it might be a little more, as you previously stated, than what it used to be. But I don't want a number for a bunch of stuff added to, I mean, we've already worked through this one time and got it down to what we could basically provide to people with, and, and you can expand at any time. You can add on, you can add a wing, you can do a lot of things later.
Yeah.
But what I want is a number, which I thought we were getting to begin with, on what has already been approved in the previous plan, however many years ago that was. What is that number?
Yeah, we can get a number and go, and, and act, act.
I thought that's what we asked for, but that ain't what we got, we got a number that added this and took that out, and added this, took that out. And that's not what we asking them to do, we asked for, I thought we went back to get a real number for what had been previously approved in today's world, we know it, construction cost may have went up some, but it ain't go up no five and a half, six million dollars. Because they added a bunch of stuff that was not requested them to add by this board.
I'm with you on it, because if you add some more, you got to have another person come in and draw more plans, that's gonna be.
Mr. Marone was trying to tell you a while ago, that you add these costs to, if you want to look at building a building, you add these costs to it, now we can't afford to make the annual payments.
Right.
That's what Mr. Marone is trying to tell you. If you add three million dollars in the cost of those annual payments have went up, and if you add four or five million dollars, now you, the payments have went.
And you go out, you go add more money on them, have to come back and draw plans again for the new stuff they put.
Rough, rough estimates, excuse me, I'm sorry, rough estimates from USDA, our, our original forty-year loan at three point five percent for the ten million, our payments will be four hundred and sixty-eight thousand. If you add four million to that, at today's, again, the interest rate they're using now at four point two five percent, that's an additional two hundred and ten, ten thousand dollars, Commissioner, that's seven hundred thousand dollars, I'm sorry, no. No.
I'm not voting on that.
No.
Can't do it.
I'm not gonna stand here and tell you to do it, sorry, it's not gonna happen.
I'm not gonna put people in Franklin County at bar net.
Come on, forty years, no.
Can't do that, that's why we need to get in there and get, tell them what we want, tell them, telling us that, all that wish list.
We done told them one time, what we wanted.
Yeah, yeah.
What you want, what you, what we need to do to move forward, I mean, we.
I mean, if you guys give me a motion, I'm sorry, make a motion now to schedule it for the sixteenth at one thirty, and I'll try to get everybody together and make sure they can make it, if they can't, I'll let you know on July second that we have to change that date.
I'll make a motion of that, but I also want the number back on what was originally presented to this board, and what that cost is.
Okay.
And I'm sure it ain't seventeen million dollars.
It was eleven million, wasn't it?
It was ten point something.
Ten point, almost eleven million.
Yeah, I don't, eleven, close to twelve.
So, I'm gonna put that in my motion, Michael, that you tell the architect, whoever's coming up with these construction costs, that's what we want, go back to the plan that was presented to this board, that we all agreed on we'd move forward with. What's that number, that's what the chairman's asking for, that's what I'm asking for. And it sounds like Commissioner Masters on board with that. And I see Commissioner Bolt shaking his head, and I see Commissioner Jones shaking his head.
Then we have a target budget.
So, when you come to this public here, or this workshop we gonna have, we need that number also. And then if they want to explain to us what else they want to do, that's fine, but we need this number.
Okay.
Okay, that's what we need, and I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Paris, talking about Commissioner Bolt, because.
I have to comment.
The other people ain't, you know, some in their ears, they ain't listening to what we asking. So, we got to take it and do what we gotta do. Y'all ready to vote?
Hey, Mr. Chairman.
Good.
Michael, can we have Dr. Conrad at this meeting? In this, this, the idea, you know, his medical background, his knowledge and everything, he would be an MD, I think that just should be tuned in to this conversation next.
If you'd like.
I like him there, I think, I think, I think it's important to be able to get medical input, even if he's just tuned in, listening to the whole picture, I think it would be important for us to know he's there.
No, we ain't stopping nobody from coming, it's just a workshop.
It is, but I think it may be of interest.
He's a non, Mr. Chairman, he's a non-member of the hospital board, beginning with, right?
Yeah.
We ain't stopping nobody from coming, we, it just, we, we ain't trying to stop nobody.
I know we're not, but I'm just.
Thinking medically here.
That's a bracket, I'm.
If the commissioners were finished with their comments, I was going to maybe start a conversation about having the Adams Consulting Group attend this workshop, I know they've been critical in part of the planning and development, sort of riding herd with both the architect and the contractor on your behalf as your representative, I, I doubt they would come down for free, I mean, the last time they came down for a workshop, they, they had a, a charge that was associated with that, but I, I think their input would be helpful to the board in trying to refine a number, at least, authorize Mike to contact them, then, then see if they agree with my assessment. But that'd be my suggestion to the board.
Okay.
I'm to the list, commissioners.
And by, I meant, y'all want to add that to you, Mike?
I'll add it to my motion, Mike, if you could bring the information back to us at the next board meeting, so we'll know what we're paying these people to come down, but yeah, inquire to see where we're at.
Okay.
Now, will we be able to vote that, at that workshop?
No, sir, can't vote at a workshop.
We have to do it the next meeting.
We'll, we'll do it the next meeting, we could do it, but we, we.
You could schedule.
We'll get the numbers, but we'll, we'll have the numbers, and then we'll know what we gonna do. We'll, we'll be able to tell them what we want done.
Commissioner, your, your options would be to hold the workshop, to be followed immediately by a public hearing, if you thought you were in a position to make a decision, you could do so procedurally, or you could hold the workshop and then just wait until your next regular meeting and make a decision at that time, at the, at the discretion of the board, how you want to proceed, but if we only schedule a workshop, you can talk, but you cannot take any action.
Well, I'm gonna be able to tell them what it was, let them know, so they can stop wasting all that time. Come on, when them people, see, we, them people wasting a lot of time when they going back and forth, talking about this here, we gonna put this in there, we gonna put that in there. With the cost, it's not gonna happen. We can't afford it, we ain't got the money to pay for it. So, they need to come to reality.
Got one comment real quick, Mr. Chairman, I agree with you, but I think it would give the contractor, Adam Consulting, all these people to work at the direction of the board, and give them that time, and, and then take action at the following meeting. That gives them a little time to, to get together, and, and they gonna know what we wanting to do, but it gives them two weeks to get it together and come back, and we take action at the next board meeting.
Yeah, okay, that's, um.
Good strategy.
So, I've made a motion for all these different things.
Yeah. Commissioner Bolt, do you amend your second?
Yes, sir, I do.
Thank you.
All right, y'all ready to vote?
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass or not?
Commissioner, one more thing, if I may, as, as we're speaking about Weems here, I know at the last meeting I told you, we talked about appointing a liaison coordinator, project manager, what the title would be, and we're looking at Ms. Nicole Sheppi. What I have is the, the architect looking at her resume, and they were going to run it through USDA to see, you know, if she would qualify for this, this position, but, Commissioner, let me tell you all this, again, you know, I am to the point where I can't balance both Weems and the county, it's, it's not working out here for me. And so, the problem I have with the situation that we presented with, with Ms. Sheppi is that you can't serve two masters. So, you wanted to report to the board and give you her experience, an opinion based on her experience, education, et cetera, whatever. The problem is, as a Weems employee, she still works with the CEO. And if her opinion differs with the CEO, you're putting her in a bad position. And so, I guess if we're gonna leave her as a Weems employee, I, I'm not sure that might be the best role for her then. I, I, I just think it's a bad situation to, to put her in, you know, because he is her boss. She's, she's reporting to you, she's bringing information to you, but she's still an employee of Weems, which she is managed by the CEO.
Well, what if she be a contractor, and we could pay her out of that? She be private contractor, and we pay her out of that, the Weems, I meant, the, 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 can that happen?
I sit down and talk to the attorney about that, I think he's asking.
Oh, I understand what he's asking, I'd like to have more than five seconds of.
Think about that.
Time to think about it, though, so.
Man, I'm trying to keep, you know, keep, I want, ain't no need to put that young lady on the spot like that.
Are we talking about paying her out of operations, it's, or, because, you know, they get a certain amount for operations, they get a certain amount, well, and we got the, the rest that goes into the trust fund.
Don't really get up the penny, I don't get with it, though.
Well.
I do because, Mr. Chairman? I do because we're already giving them a big subsidy, and if you take and let them just keep the subsidy, and then we got to turn around and pay her out of the trust fund, to me, that's double dipping, what are they gonna do with the money they're already paying her at Weems Memorial Hospital now?
Yeah.
I mean, and then, I, I, she, she needs to get her money out of Weems, just like she's doing right now, how you structured that, I don't care.
Yeah, I mean, they structured, yeah.
Or either you reduce, or either you reduce the county subsidy to the hospital in the amount that you're gonna pay her, and not take it back out of the trust fund, I mean.
Yeah, that, that what I'm coming on.
I mean, you need, you guys figure that one out.
Yeah, I have to say, again, the five-second answer, because also what you don't, the, the things you don't want, if you do that, I mean, she also has a role where she, it would be her job to protect, the county's responsible for the buildings. So, you won't want a duplicate position, you won't want her doing it, and then to go and hire somebody to do the same thing at Weems as a facility manager, so.
Exactly.
Yeah, so we'd also have to inform the hospital that, look, you no longer, the county's taking over the facility management, basically. So, she, you know, she'll inform the CEO, keeping abreast of what's going on, but that'd be the county's responsibility. That, again, that's the five-second answer, I apologize, I already see Commissioner Jones look.
Very complicated.
Yeah, I need to, I need to sit with attorney, I know, it, it is, but I'm trying to think and talk, it's never a good thing for me at the same time.
The only question I have, Mr. Chairman, the only question I have is, unless I'm misunderstanding, I think we're still waiting to hear back on the resume.
Yes.
Everything.
Yes.
Before, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
So, we're not even, yeah, without that.
We're not that far yet.
That's right.
Okay.
That's right.
That's.
I'll, I guess, Commissioner, what I was telling you, it's getting tougher and tougher for me to balance both, so we.
And that's what I'm hearing.
I need help, I'm sorry, I, I, I'm not gonna argue here with.
Well, I can understand that, because you dealing with, ain't before, you, you don't probably work in forty hours in a week, and then if you got to defend twin of them on hospital at times, you ain't got time to do what I've worked.
Yeah, I mean, even in my office, you know, y'all know that Whitney got a baby, so she's out, you know, with the, that, that, probably be for a while. I mean, I depend on Allen, but right now, this is his time of year, where you see him today, you don't tomorrow, you know? I mean, it, it is, it's, that's what he does, you know, so it's, it's tough, I'm not gonna lie to y'all, it's, it's tough.
Are you gonna be with him?
You know, so, no, no, not even close, I told you, not even close, but, yeah, it, it's tough, and I'm, you know, I'm, hey, the song says, I'm not too proud, too proud to beg, it's just, it's too much.
Come back, Mr. Chairman, come back to us with some recommendations, once we get the resume thing, as Mr. Jones is, and, and see what we need to do, but I'm not willing to take her as an employee away from Weems and pay, pay for her with a separate account, and just let Weems keep the money that they're paying her right now, because I don't.
No, we ain't gonna do that.
We don't need the redundancy.
No, we ain't gonna do that.
Figure it out, have to come back to us with some information.
Okay, I hate to lay that all on you guys, but, you know, it is what it is, so.
Yeah, we can take our salary from them, what they got, like, you know, like you explained.
Probably went too far with that, but it was just thinking and talking at the same time, sorry.
But.
Sorry.
We need to do. Okay.
Are you finished, Mr. Marone?
Ev, there, through with me.
Y'all through, did we vote, and everything?
Yeah, we did.
Okay.
Did we make the vote on, and we done everything we voted?
There's not been a vote on the workshop matter, no, there's been a motion and a second, I don't have a vote.
Okay, y'all, y'all ready, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass or not?
Thank you.
Keep up the good work, all.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm done with my, all the action items on my report, but the board did instruct me to look at this document that it provided to the board by Mr. Lovestrand this morning, on essentially, this titled Advancing Appalachian Agriculture. Mr. Lovestrand has already given you an explanation of what the purpose of, of the program is. I've reviewed the document, I don't see anything that is objectionable in its content, I do have a couple of questions for Mr. Lovestrand, with your permission, that I'd like to ask.
Go ahead.
Your, the, the document refers exclusively to agriculture, but I think in your presentation, you told the board that you would be presenting assistance to both aquaculture and, to the extent we have local agriculture, be helping both the aquaculture and local agriculture, correct?
Yes, sir.
And there is no local grant match or any local funds that would be participating in the cost of this program?
No, the in-kind match is based on salaries from the ARPC folks, I believe, that are working on the project, so it's all provided.
Well, the only concern I really had, Commissioner, was making sure that whether or not there was any local monies involved, and would it be helping our aquaculture, because we, we certainly have more of that than we have agriculture in the community. With those two questions being answered, I, I see no objection to the board approving a letter of recommendation for Mr. Lovestrand.
Mr. Chairman, I got a, a note on that before we.